In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the planning board of the township has been provided. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Barson?
Here.
Theodore Chase?
Here.
Erica Incentio?
Okay, sorry.
Erica Incentio, Mustafa Mansray, and Rebecca Hilbert all ask to be excused. Sammy Shabon?
Here.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Here.
Charles?
Here.
Robert Thomas?
Here.
Mahir Rafiq?
Here.
Michael Oshini?
Here. So, before we get started tonight, let me give a little introduction on how the meeting will run. We have a minor subdivision, which will take maybe about two minutes. But for that, we'll open up the meeting to the public for any public comment, not planning comment that's not the subject of the hearing tonight. So if you're here to talk about B9 Schoolhouse, that will have its own separate public opening. We're going to give the applicant, who has three witnesses to present tonight, about an hour and a half or so, it's about a quarter to nine. We're going to take a bio break for about 10 minutes, and then we'll come back and open to the public for any questions or cross-examination of those witnesses. And then we will call it a night at 10 o'clock. So we'll give the public about an hour. So if the entire hour is needed, this application will obviously be continued to another meeting. So we'll not be voting on this tonight. So with that, I make a motion to open to the public for any planning comment not the subject of tonight's hearing.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is now open to the public for any general planning comments. Seeing no one coming forward, I move to close.
Got one.
Oh, do we? Okay. Hey, Arnie. So just so you know, this is for any general planning comment, not the subject of the warehouse application hearing tonight. That will be separate opening to the public. So if you have a general planning comment, that's fine. If you have a comment about B9 Schoolhouse, wait till the hearing is open on that. Got to come early. All right. With that, I make a motion to close to the public.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so we had one minor subdivision. The Minor Subdivision Committee met earlier tonight for Northview Associates LLC PLN We reviewed the technical review committee report and agree with it. There were two things that we wanted to note as we approve or would move to approve the minor subdivision. One is the sidewalk recommendation. There are no sidewalks in the area or no connections anticipated. Therefore, the TRC recommended waving sidewalks, which is fine. But the TRC also noted that the limits of clearing may be somewhat unrealistic in terms of being too small. So the other condition I would add to that application is that any limit of clearing that requires tree removal, that the applicant be required to replace trees in accordance with the township tree ordinance. But with that, the Minor Subcommittee has approved the application or moves to the Board to approve.
Did the Minor Subdivision Committee approve it?
Yeah.
So the Minor Subdivision Committee approved it, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so this Board doesn't need to act. The Minor Subdivision Committee approved it, and by the ordinance, you need to report that to the rest of the Planning Board.
Okay, and that's what I've done, so there we go.
And just for the record, that had been previously approved under the name of Warren Capital.
Yes.
Basically, and that approval had expired, so they came in with basically the exact same application, but dotting i's and crossing some t's.
So we'll see what happens this time. This is the third try. There was actually two earlier approvals, one in 2014 and one in 2020. So with that, I turn it over to Peter and B9 Schoolhouse.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of the applicant. If the Board recalls, we were here in January of this year, at which time we presented testimony of Liz Gaber, who is the project director for the owner of the project, and we presented testimony of Mr. Steve Kopp, who is one of the architects on the project. We stopped the meeting. Mr. Kopp was cross-examined by members of the public, was not cross-examined by Mr. Lieberman. At that time, we stopped the meeting. As a result of that meeting and the questioning by the members of the Board, where I learned that evening that the word variance is a four-letter word, my client decided to go back and redesign the project to eliminate the two variances that we were seeking previously, notwithstanding the fact that, in their opinion, they were variances that were previously granted by this Board. But rather than to create any issues, we agreed to submit a variance-free application, which resulted in my client having to reduce the size of the buildings by over 30,000 square feet, which is a substantial reduction for them. What I intend to do this evening is call three witnesses. I intend to call the site engineer, our landscape architect, and also our architect, which I think all of that testimony is sort of related, and I think it will give the Board and the members of the public an opportunity to ask questions. At the next meeting, I will present a traffic testimony and perhaps planning testimony, although it may not be necessary. With those preliminary comments, I will call as my first witness Kyle Kavinsky.
Your name, please?
Testimony about to give, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
State your full name, spell your last name for the record, and indicate by whom you're employed and your credentials.
Sure. Kyle Kavinsky, K-A-V-I-N-S-K-I, Dynamic Engineering.
Okay. Mr. Kavinsky, you're a licensed civil engineer in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
And can you give the Board the benefit of your educational and professional background?
Certainly. Sorry.
Did you testify at the last meeting?
I have. I testified at a previous Planning Board meeting for the Franklin Township. Not this one.
Okay. Are you a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey?
I am.
With experience?
I have over 12 years' experience. I'm a partner at Dynamic Engineering. I've been accepted from numerous boards throughout the state, and I hold an active license.
You're accepted.
Thank you. My apologies.
Okay. Mr. Kavinsky, there are two applications that are pending before the Board. One is a minor subdivision, which normally would have been heard by the Minor Subdivision Committee, except your ordinance says if it's a minor subdivision in conjunction with a development application, it has to be heard by the Board. So can you indicate to the Board, describe the properties in question and what we are subdividing?
Certainly. So again, I'll go to our first exhibit, which is an aerial map exhibit prepared by our office, dated April 20, 2023. Mark that A1. Okay, perfect. This is an aerial of the subject site and property with the surrounding properties adjacent to it. The site is located at Block 514, lots 1 through 3, Lot 60, and Lot 60. The southern portion of Lot 60, which is at the bottom of the page, is actually within the RR3 zone. We will be subdividing that portion of the property off. It's 6.75 acres. And then the remainder of the property, which is in the BI zone, which is 20.07 acres, will be subdivided on its own lots. We'll have two conforming lots, each one in each zone.
Okay. Mr. Kavinsky, with respect to the lots in question, there are three lots that currently front on Schoolhouse Road, correct?
Correct.
And they're outlined on your exhibit. That's perfect. You can show them.
Yep.
And what is located on those lots?
Two residential dwellings and open space in wooded areas.
Okay. And the residential dwellings are non-conforming uses in the BI zone?
That's correct.
And as a condition of the subdivision approval, we will be demolishing those two dwellings to eliminate the non-conforming use?
That's correct.
Okay. And you indicated the size of that lot is?
It's 6.75 acres. I'm sorry, the BI zone is 20.07 acres.
Okay. And the other lot, can you just outline it for the members of the public to see? Okay, and that lot is six-plus acres?
Correct.
And that lot, you indicated, is in the RR3 zone, correct?
Correct.
And there is no proposed development on that lot? So after the subdivision, the development application will only take place on the 20-acre lot, is that correct?
That's correct.
And with respect to the minor subdivision, there was a TRC report, and there were some comments in the engineering report. We can comply with all of those comments, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. That ends my testimony on the minor subdivision. The Board can, I don't know if they want to vote on that now or wait till the end when everything is done. It's up to you, Mr. Chairman.
Why don't we hold that?
Fine. All right. Now, Mr. Kavinsky, let's now focus on the site plan. As you indicated, right now, the site that is the subject of the site plan application has two dwellings and some open fields and some vegetation, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Can you indicate to the Board what we are doing as far as the site plan is concerned?
Certainly. Let me just finish up on the existing conditions of the site real quick, just to run through that. So again, we have two existing residential dwellings located in the P1 zone, we're removing as part of, that are not conforming in the zone. There's an existing pond and wetlands area located on the southern portion of the site, as well as an isolated wetland located at the northwestern corner of Mettlers and Schoolhouse Road.
Okay. Before you go on, so again, the Board and the members of the public can see it, can you show the Board where those wetlands are and where the pond is?
Certainly. The pond is located on the southern portion of the property, and then the wetlands kind of encompass that area. And then there's a small isolated wetland near the northwestern corner of Schoolhouse and Mettlers Road.
Okay. And have those two portions of the property been the subject of an LOI?
Yes, they have.
And what is the status of that?
It's currently pending with the DEB.
Was there a previous LOI that was granted with respect to this property?
Yes, there was.
And that expired, and that's why you had to reapply for the new one?
For Lot 1, the remaining portions of the property are all standing with the LOIs currently on site.
Okay. Now, can we go to the site plan?
Certainly. So this is the next exhibit. This is an overall site plan rendering, again, prepared by our office, dated April 20, 2023. Going to mark this A2. For orientation purposes, north is actually to the right side of the page, west is to the top, south is to the left side, and east is to the bottom of the page. This is a rendering of the site plan with landscaping overlaid and colored for presentation purposes. So the orange areas are the buildings. Any type of grays are parking lots or parking areas. And then this kind of tan is the sidewalks and docking areas for the warehouse. Again, as indicated, we'll be removing the existing non-conforming uses on site, and we're proposing two warehouse buildings, which are permitted uses within the BI zone. The building to the west is 144,450 square feet with 42 dock positions and one drive-in ramp. The building to the east is a 70,970-square-foot warehouse with 18 dock positions and one drive-in ramp. As indicated, the site plan complies with the use bulk standards, including all setbacks and previous coverage, lock coverage, floor ratio, as well as the parking requirements within the BI zone and the scenic corridor. We are not requesting any variances part of this application. Parking for the site will include 105 total parking spaces, eight of which will be ADA compliant. We'll have 73 parking spaces for the western building, which is on the west side of the western building, and we'll have 32 parking spaces on the north side of the eastern building, again servicing that building. In addition, we'll be providing six EV parking stalls, one which will be ADA compliant. We're also providing ride-hail spaces for signage, as well as striping, to indicate any areas where we're designated pickup and drop-off areas. The site has, sorry.
Can you indicate where the ride-hail areas will be?
Certainly. It's generally near the entrances of each building.
And those are?
Within the parking lot areas.
And those are for people who are going to be picked up or dropped off to work and are not coming in their own vehicles, correct?
Correct. So the site has two main frontages, one along Schoolhouse Road and one along Mettlers Road. We're proposing two driveways on Schoolhouse Road. The western driveway will service the parking area of the western building. The eastern driveway will service the loading dock area, as well as the eastern building's parking lot. We are going to be restricting left turns out for trucks at the eastern driveway to Schoolhouse Road. In addition, we are providing emergency access around the buildings. Those will be used for emergency vehicles only. Our traffic engineer will provide some additional traffic testimony and circulation about access.
Before you go on concerning that, the parking for the westerly building would be accessed through that driveway on the westerly side of the property, correct?
Correct.
And trucks do not have the ability to access that driveway? That's restricted solely to motor vehicles.
Correct.
The other driveway, which is between the two buildings, that would have truck access, so they would be able to access both buildings and would also have vehicle access for the vehicles that would be parking near what would be the easterly building?
Correct, yes. That driveway will utilize for both buildings for the access to the docking areas.
Okay. And you indicated that there would be appropriate signage posted at the driveway exit to restrict truck traffic from exiting the site and making a left-hand turn onto Schoolhouse, correct?
Correct.
And obviously, if there are motor vehicles that are exiting the site, they have the ability to make the left-hand turn?
Yes.
Okay. Please continue.
The loading area is centrally located on the property, and it was designed to basically screen it as much as possible. Again, from the building to Mettlers Road, the loading dock is screened, as well as we've provided some California corners, which are bumpouts in the building areas, to further block the loading dock area from Schoolhouse Road. In addition, we have Birmingham and landscaping as well, providing some screening there for the loading dock areas of Schoolhouse. The loading area will provide safe and efficient access to the loading docks, and then we are also including no idling signage throughout the loading dock area to ensure idling will not occur in that area. Refuge, a recycling and trash compactor is located within one of the loading docks for each building, and will be picked up by private hauler as needed.
So there will be no separate trash enclosure? They will be within the loading dock area?
Correct.
Okay.
Trains for the site will be provided through a brand-new conveyance system throughout the property. The project's been designed to meet New Jersey stormwater regulations by implementing two above-ground bioretention basins, one previous pavement system, one green infrastructure manufach treatment device, and a constructed wetland. The proposed outfall on the western frontage utilizes natural stone and will be screened with landscaping and berms to blend it into the landscape.
Mr. Kavinsky, before you go on, briefly go through that in a little bit more detail so that the Board and the members of the public can understand the entire stormwater management system and how it works.
Understood. So the stormwater is directed to, we'll start in the other area. So the first above-ground bioretention basin is located along the northern property line, and it's located directly adjacent to the western building. That is, to treat the water, it goes through and connects ultimately to the constructed wetland on the western portion of the property. There's also another bioretention system located at the end of the cul-de-sac of the drive of the loading dock area, which will again treat the water and send it to the constructed wetland located at the western property. There's a porous pavement system that's located within the parking lot area of the western building that allows the water to infiltrate through the porous pavement section and is detained, and then again gets tied into the constructed wetland at the western property line. And then the manufach treatment device ties into the existing process system, then ties into the constructed wetland at the western portion. The constructed wetland detained, does much of the detention, and then controls all the flow out through a outlet structure and ties into the landscaping and the Birmingham area.
Okay. Please continue.
The proposed project will maintain the existing tree line along both frontages for both Schoolhouse and Mettlers Road. We're providing Birmingham behind that existing vegetation, as well as substantial landscaping within the Birmingham and interior to the site to enhance any buffering for the scenic corridor and the adjacent residential uses. We're providing 573 trees of varying species, 698 shrubs, grasses, and flowers. There is a tree replacement calculation for the project. We are removing 406 total trees on site, which is required to replace for 871 trees. So we have a deficit of 298 trees for replacement. Our landscape architect will be discussing the landscaping thoroughly, as well as the We are also proposing a six-foot solid fence along the frontages adjacent to the property, so there'll be a fence running along both property lines, I mean, sorry, along both frontages. There was a comment in Mr. Healy's review letter asking the fence be placed at the top of the berm. We don't have an issue with this. It's just more of a, there's a contradiction between the buffer ordinance and the scenic corridor ordinance. One requires a solid fence, while the other requires a 50% opaque fence. So it's just a preference of the Board as to how we'd like to handle that. Utilities for the site will be connecting to the existing gas, water, and electric mains located along the site frontages. All proposed utilities will be installed underground, and we will be extending the sanitary sewer main within Schoolhouse Road to the site frontage, which is approximately 489 linear feet. Then we're providing an onsite pump station, force main to connect to that main extension at the site frontage.
So that all utilities for the project will be coming in from Schoolhouse, and Mettlers will remain unaffected as a result of this?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Sorry. And then signage for the site, we're providing a 10-foot-high freestanding sign. That's 45 square feet, and that's proposed at the frontage along Schoolhouse Road at the eastern driveway. All proposed signage will comply with the signage requirements and the scenic corridor.
Can you discuss lighting?
Lighting will be provided by 17 building-mounted LED lights throughout the site, although no building-mounted area lights we propose facing Mettlers Road. We'll be providing 11 LED light poles that are 15 feet tall with houseside shields near the parking and driveway areas closest to Mettlers, again to ensure no spillage onto Mettlers. We're providing five LED area light poles, 25 feet tall, within the loading dock area. All the lighting is energy-efficient, full cutoff fixtures, and we'll provide uniformed lighting throughout the parking areas and illumination of the driveways for safety purposes.
Okay. Mr. Kavinsky, I'm sure the residents of Canal Walker are curious as to where the lights are on the side facing Mettlers, so can you point them out?
Certainly. So they basically border the edge of the parking lot along the western portion of the property, as well as the western line along the driveway here. So again, to ensure that the light is facing inward toward the development as opposed to toward Mettlers.
Okay. So it will be before we even get to the trees and the fencing and everything else, all the lighting will be interior to the site and will be shielded?
Correct.
Thank you. Now, with respect, and I know the landscape architect is going to testify as to the landscaping, generally, we are landscaping around the entire perimeter of all of the buildings, correct?
Correct.
And you show some landscaping or some vegetation around the pond. Is that existing vegetation, or are we proposing any vegetation back there?
So most of it is existing. There is a section of proposed plantings located on the southern portion of the lot.
Okay. And the pond itself is on the BI lot, correct?
Correct.
But there is nothing that is taking place anywhere beyond the limit of the buildings, the circular roadway around the building, other than landscaping?
Correct.
Can you indicate to the Board, and you indicated that this is fully compliant, but the distances of the driveways from Mettlers, and it's, obviously, it varies. For example, it's fairly close at near the intersection of Mettlers and Schoolhouse. How far is that driveway at that point?
One second. I'm sorry.
I can't see in this dark. I hope he can.
Yeah, I'll be area, I think.
Of course.
So it's approximately 100 feet to the intersection.
Okay. And which is the scenic corridor setback?
Correct.
And as you go further back, for example, at the midpoint of the building where it jogs, how far back is the driveway set at that point in time?
Explain that one more time, sorry.
Where the building jogs about halfway down the building, how far is the setback there?
Approximately 140 feet.
And then at the back of the building to Mettlers, how far is the driveway setback?
Approximately 140 feet.
Okay. And then with respect to the setbacks on Schoolhouse, are they fully compliant both with the BI and the scenic corridor ordinance?
Yes, they are.
Okay, thank you. Now, I'm going to try to do this. Mr. Kavinsky, you've had the opportunity to review staff reports that were generated in conjunction with this application?
Yes, I have.
Okay. And as a matter of fact, as a result of the numerous changes that have been made to the application, there are two and sometimes three iterations of the staff reports, correct?
Correct.
The latest and greatest from Mr. Healy was dated March of this year, is that correct?
That's correct, March 10.
Okay. And I am trying to read this in the dark, which is going to be a problem. Is there any way we can get the lights up?
I could do it that way, I guess.
Can we get the lights back on?
I can do it.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't think we need to go that far.
Somewhere between.
All right. Now that everybody's thoroughly awake, leave it right there. That's good. That's good.
That's good. Okay. In Mr. Healy's report, he indicated that we did in fact comply with the zoning ordinance and also the setbacks of the scenic corridor. And we'll get into the design standards with our landscape architect. But Mr. Healy asked the questions about curbs and sidewalks. Are we proposing any curbs on Mettlers and sidewalks?
No, we are not. We are not, no.
So there will be no curbing or sidewalk?
Correct.
Okay. And are we proposing any curbing or sidewalk on Schoolhouse?
Curbing's already existing on Schoolhouse Road, but we are not providing any sidewalks.
Okay. And can you indicate to the Board why we are not proposing sidewalks?
Sure. So on Mettlers Road, again, it was indicated in Mr. Healy's review, there's an existing bike path that's right across the street from our property, across Mettlers, which should be serviceable enough for the area, as well as on Schoolhouse Road, apparently there's a previously approval for a bike path continuation on that side as well across the street.
I just want to say I disagree with that. Make that-
I don't think we need to go that far. Somewhere between.
Now that everybody's thoroughly awake, leave it right there. That's good. That's good.
That's good. Okay. In Mr. Healy's report, he indicated that we did in fact comply with the zoning ordinance and also the setbacks of the scenic corridor. And we'll get into the design standards with our landscape architect. But Mr. Healy asked the questions about curbs and sidewalks. Are we proposing any curbs on Metlers?
No, we are not. We are not, no.
So there will be no curbing or sidewalk?
Correct.
Okay. And are we proposing any curbing or sidewalk on Schoolhouse?
Curbing's already existing on Schoolhouse Road, but we are not providing any sidewalks.
Okay. And can you indicate to the board why we are not proposing sidewalks?
Sure. So on Metlers Road, again, it was indicated in Mr. Healy's review, there's an existing bike path that's right across the street from, from our property, across Metlers, which should be serviceable enough for the, for the area, as well as on Schoolhouse Road, apparently there's a previously approval for a bike path continuation on that side as well, across the street.
You just want to say I disagree with that. Make that known. There's a big difference between a cyclist and a pedestrian. So the bike lane cannot serve for an accommodation for a pedestrian if a cyclist were to strike pedestrian walking in that sidewalk at the speeds in which we travel. I don't think you want to put your professional career on the line for that. So we don't want to act here today as if a bike lane is an accommodation for a pedestrian.
Understood. It was, again, it's in the scenic corridor where they request that a bike lane as opposed to a sidewalk be, be, I've done, I understand your, I understand.
Yeah. I just want to clarify what's in the report. He said, in his opinion, consistency with it would dictate no sidewalk or bike lane along it, but that's not, that's not best practice, even though it's there. You also exit, across the street is a sidewalk, across Metlers, I think, Schoolhouse Road, there's a sidewalk. So connectivity from just a health standpoint, for people to be healthy in the area, to be able to walk extended lengths, is justification for a sidewalk.
I, I will defer comment on that till later because obviously there's some, there's some contradictions between your ordinances and that, you know, the board will have to make that decision.
Understood.
Yeah, no, we can discuss this. I, I mean, I don't think anybody is arguing about Metlers because we want that to remain as undisturbed as possible. But on Schoolhouse, I think what Charles says makes a lot of sense. We can, we can discuss that.
Yeah. Mr. Healy, in page five of his report, talks about the restriction of a 12-foot drive, wide driveway in the scenic corridor ordinance. Is that practical for this type of use, which is a permitted use in this zone?
No, it's not.
Okay. And the driveways that we proposed were sized such that they would either A accommodate the motor vehicles on the westerly driveway and the motor vehicles and trucks on the easterly driveway?
Correct.
And some of those other comments really deal with landscaping or architecture, which I will wait till they, those experts testify. I think that deals with Mr. Healy's report. You've also had an opportunity to review the report of Mr. Mazzi and Mr. Rousseau from CME dated March 30th of this year?
Yes, I have.
Okay. And that report consists of, I think it was nine, eight pages. Are there any comments that we cannot or cannot comply with?
The only comment that was brought up for us is the additional driveway to Schoolhouse Road for the passenger lot on the, for the eastern building. This would create an additional variance for the application. So that's what, you know, that's why we would not be providing that, as well as a reduction in the berming, landscaping, and items that go along with that.
All right. Again, for the benefit of the public, can you show on the board where the driveway was requested?
Generally, it'd be in, in location, you know, adjacent to the eastern parking lot, located east of the center driveway, we'll call it.
Okay. And that driveway would be used to service the motor vehicles using that building?
Correct.
However, your ordinance, the Franklin Township ordinance does not allow more than two driveways, correct?
Correct.
So we cannot put that driveway in?
Correct.
The other comment?
Is mainly, again, testimony from the landscape architect, which will, you know, regarding the landscaping.
Okay. And you've reviewed the report of Mr. House dated March 30th, and we can comply with all of his comments, which involves some relocation of hydrants and relocation of the emergency access drive, correct?
Yes, we're, we're.
Okay. And the health department has no issues, nor do the police department, and we are addressing the sewage authority comments, correct?
Correct.
Can you indicate, other than the sewage authority, whether, what other outside agencies have reviewed or are in the process of reviewing this application, and the status of those reviews?
Absolutely. So we have Somerset County Planning Board approval. We have Somerset Union Soil Conservation District approval. We have conditional approval from the Delaware River to Canal Commission. We are pending approval for the NJDEP for an LOI, wetlands LOI, and wetlands GP6 and transitional area waiver. We have a flood hazard area NJDEP verification and a TWA permit with the NJDEP pending.
Those last permits, can you just briefly go through the board, or through those permits, what they are so either the board or the public will understand them?
Certainly. The TWA permit is a treatment works approval, which is an approval from the DEP for the sewer extension within Schoolhouse Road. The flood hazard, sorry, the wetlands permitting is a verification of the wetlands locations as well as disturbance within the wetland buffer areas.
When you've mentioned disturbance within the wetlands buffer area, are we disturbing any wetland buffers?
Yes, we are.
And what are we doing?
We are mainly grading and providing plantings within the wetlands buffer areas. Both the isolated wetland located on the northwestern portion of the property, we're providing plantings. And on the southern property, we are providing some grading as well as providing plantings.
There will be no buildings, driveways, or any other structures within those wetlands, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And the other permits?
I think I went over the other ones. Sorry.
The DEP, the general permits?
Oh, sorry. So again, the, the wetlands GP6 is for disturbance within the isolated, I could combine both. Combine the, for the disturbance within the isolated wetland buffer, for, again, the plantings, no disturbance as far as grading or anything like that. And then the transition area waiver is again for the disturbance of the wetlands located on the southern property with the grading and the.
I have no further questions of this witness at this time, and I'd like to move on to my next witness.
Sure. Maybe take a pause just to see if the board has any questions of this witness?
It's your show.
And then when you have your, your three complete, we'll take the break and then open to the public since all three are thematically related.
Mr. Chairman, would it make any sense to have, have them go through all three witnesses and then maybe have the board ask questions?
Yeah, sure.
Because there could be some questions even that the board may have that the landscape architect may answer.
No, that's a good point.
Or even the architect.
Why don't we do that? Probably makes, makes more sense. Thanks, Mark.
Mr. Haynes.
You solemnly swear the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
I do.
State your full name, spell your last name for the record.
Brian Haynes, last name is H A N E S.
Mr. Haynes, what is your occupation?
I'm a landscape architect.
And can you give the board the benefit of your educational and professional background?
I have a bachelor of landscape architecture. I have been practicing for about 25 years.
And can you indicate to the board the types of projects that you have designed and worked on?
We do try to maintain a diverse portfolio, anything from a small installation in a public garden to pretty significant works at the Crystal Bridges Museum of Art in Arkansas right now. Anything from single-family housing to high-rise development.
Okay. And you're licensed?
Licensed in the state of New Jersey?
I am licensed in New Jersey and I think six other states.
He's accepted.
Thank you. Brian, you are familiar with the subject property, have walked it, have you not?
Correct.
And you are also familiar with the surrounding land uses?
Yes.
You are also familiar with the township zoning ordinance as applies to the BI zone?
Yes.
And you are also familiar with the township zoning ordinance as it applies to the scenic corridor, is that correct?
Correct.
And as Mr. Kowinski indicated, in those two ordinances, there are some conflicts in those ordinances, correct?
That's correct.
In addition to being familiar with the ordinances, being familiar with the area, did you sit in on meetings with representatives of the homeowners association from Canal Walk?
That's true, yes.
And they provided some input to you in helping you come up with your landscape plan?
Correct.
And in developing your landscape plan, what was your thought process in trying to design a plan to meet the needs of the scenic corridor ordinance, the BI zone, and the residents?
Yes, we were approached by my client to try to resolve the inherent conflicts between the two. We tried to meet the spirit of both of them at the same time. So we have maintained a relatively open vista at the edge of the properties while also providing for the screening and buffering that the BI requires.
And do you have exhibits to show the landscaping? And I guess, Kyle, can you bring them up and then we can, now we may have to turn the lights off because otherwise it doesn't look very good. Okay.
Peter, you can move your mic closer so you don't have to stretch. There you go.
To me?
Yeah, you can pick it up. There you go.
Is this better?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. Brian, can you indicate, can we have that marked as A3? That? What does it represent, Mr. Leifer? Brian, what does that exhibit represent?
I believe we're going to see views of the landscape over the course of time.
Okay. Is there a date on this exhibit and who the author is? This was submitted, hang on.
May 3rd.
May 3rd.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, was this submitted today?
Excuse me, you can't speak without a mic.
Stuart, you know the rules. Please. You know the rules, so don't.
Can't speak without a mic, sir.
Well, no, he can't speak. We're not in public.
Well, I'm objecting, that's.
You're objecting, okay. This is, is this, Peter, is this a colorized?
Yeah. This was, yeah, this is colorized. It was submitted as part of the package that's.
So the only difference is now we're seeing it in color?
In color.
Which we're gonna mark as exhibits because they're now colorized.
Right.
Okay. So that's the only difference between what's in our packets that we've seen since we got the packets and this exhibit is the colorization.
That exhibit, that is correct.
All right.
I'm sorry. That exhibit, that is correct.
Okay. That's fine, go ahead.
And, and Brian, can you indicate what that photograph represents?
This is the existing conditions at the corner of Metlers Road. That's the, site is in the background.
Okay.
This, we're maintaining a lot of the existing trees at that corner. Obviously, there are some that will be taken down in the direction of the township engineer. This is the site in the first year. This is it, year 10. This is Metlers Road further down along Canal Walk. Again, the existing condition, the first year and year 10. I know because we are maintaining so much of the existing vegetation, it's probably not easy to see.
So just to, just before we go forward, all of the existing vegetation that currently exists along Metlers Road will be maintained unless a tree needs to get out because of, you know, direction of the township engineer, but is the intent to maintain all the existing vegetation?
That's correct.
Now, your exhibit showed that you were going to supplement that. What are you supplementing with that vegetation with along the roadway?
Along the roadway will be meadow grasses and perennials.
Okay. Now, can you go to the next exhibit?
So this is a view, again, from Metlers Road. This is it, the first year. And after 10 years.
Ask the members of the public to please, please be quiet so we can hear the testimony.
Can you, can you back up one slide, please? One more. Okay. We have the building in the background and we'll go into the colorization of the building later, but what are we planting, what is being shown on this exhibit as plantings that we're putting in right away?
On this drawing, nothing. This is all existing conditions.
Okay. And that is?
This view showing the first year is a combination of evergreen and deciduous trees, flowering trees, shrubs, and again, a ground layer that's primarily meadow grasses and perennials.
So at, at the time that the construction is completed and all the landscaping is installed, the top of the building is what you would be able to see after all the landscaping is in?
Correct.
Okay. Go to the next exhibit. And that's your year 10 after the landscaping matures and grows?
Correct.
Okay. And again, the mix, there's a mix of evergreens and deciduous in that exhibit?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Leifer, can you speak more directly into the mic?
I'm sorry. I'm trying to look at pictures and talk. All right. Can you indicate what this photograph represents?
This is on Metlers, looking to the north, further to the south end of the site. Again, this is indicating the existing landscape along Metlers.
So this would be what the building would look like in, if it was put up with no landscaping, just with its existing condition?
Correct.
Okay.
This is it, at the first year. Again, flowering trees, evergreen trees, and deciduous shade trees.
And again, that indicates that in year one, the only thing you will be able to see would be the very top of the building itself?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. And then at year 10?
Year 10, it's completely hidden.
Okay. And again, the same mix of flowers and trees that were further up the road would be in this location?
That's correct. We're introducing 21 different species of trees as well as maybe close to 40 grasses and perennials.
Okay. And the species of trees that you are introducing, or any or all of them native to this area, or are you introducing new trees?
They are all 100% native, yes.
And all of the trees that are on your landscape plan are available and can be installed?
Yes. I, just as a point of reference, my wife owns a native plant nursery where I spend my Saturdays, and I've had my hands on every one of the plants that's on our plant list.
Okay. Can we move on to the next drawing? What is this depict?
This is Metlers down by the pond. Again, kind of the existing landscape that's being maintained.
Okay. And then again, we'll go to year one and then year 10.
There's year one and year 10.
Okay. And can you indicate why there is more visibility of the building at that location than other locations? Are there any constraints that limit you in putting plantings in at that particular location?
The wetlands buffer starts to be a little bit impacted, but that's primarily it.
Okay, thank you. Can we move on to the next exhibit?
This is Schoolhouse towards the. Uh, this is, uh, Schoolhouse, uh, towards the, uh, what would be the third entrance.
Okay, and this would be...
This is year one.
This would be at year one on Schoolhouse?
Right. And then year 10.
Okay.
Again, same combination of, uh, vegetation.
Okay, and when we talk about plantings during year one during construction, what are the size of the plantings?
Can we please, can we please be quiet so we can hear the testimony?
The size of year one is based on, uh, the township's ordinance. Uh, all the trees are, uh, kind of different sizes. The deciduous trees are a minimum of two and a half to three-inch caliper. Uh, the evergreen, uh, trees and, uh, the flowering trees are six to eight feet in height.
And, and those are the township ordinance requirements regarding the size of trees that need to be put in, and we will be compliant with that?
Correct.
Thank you. Can we move on to the next exhibit?
So at the, um, loading dock entrance, year one. And year 10.
And, and that is facing, that's facing Schoolhouse. That's not facing Mettler's, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. And the next exhibit?
This is at the, um, driveway, uh, to the parking lot. Again, year one and year 10.
Okay, and you're, a- as you indicated, you're familiar with, uh, the, uh, area. You've traveled the area and, and you've seen some of the newer warehouses that have been recently constructed, have you not?
Correct.
And you also have seen some of the warehouses on Schoolhouse that have been there for quite a while?
Yes.
And can you indicate the landscaping that we are providing with respect to this application in comparison to some of the other warehouses that have been, um, constructed or approved?
It's quite extensive compared to the others.
Thank you. Now I show you what was Mr. Kowinski's exhibit when he testified, and if that exhibit, in your opinion, accurately reflects the landscaping that will be around the entire, uh, facility, is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, in addition to landscaping, as part of your design, did you propose any berming?
We did.
And where was the berming proposed?
Uh, primarily underneath all those trees.
Okay, and is the berming solely on Mettler's or is there berming also on Schoolhouse?
Also on Schoolhouse.
Okay, so the trees will be planted, uh, on, and is it a continuous berm or is it a broken berm?
It is a continuous berm, uh, that varies somewhat in height and undulates in plan view.
And why did you vary it in height and why did you undulate it in plan view?
Now, again, I think we're trying to meet the, uh, spirit of the scenic corridor ordinance. Um, and rather than have an overly engineered berm, uh, we thought we'd give it a little bit of character and, and shape, make it a little more pastoral or natural.
Okay, now, uh, I indicated when questioning Mr. Kowinski about landscaping around the pond, is part of your landscape plan include that?
That's correct.
And what kind of landscaping, landscaping are we proposing around the pond?
Uh, similar material. It's, uh, again, evergreen, uh, and deciduous trees, um, flowering trees and, uh, grasses and perennials.
Okay, and roughly in relation, it, it, are there more deciduous trees or are there more evergreen trees as part of your plan? His microphone just went dead.
Sorry. I believe that there are, uh, probably more deciduous trees than evergreen. Uh, but we have what amounts to, uh, a continuous line of evergreen, uh, trees, uh, along those buffers.
So the, the intent was to provide a continuous line of evergreen trees, uh, and those, I would assume, will be on the berm, basically?
That's correct.
Okay, and there will be then the deciduous trees which will either be in front of or in be behind those trees?
That's correct.
Okay, and there was discussion by Mr. Kowinski concerning a fence. Uh, the BI ordinance requires a certain type of fence, does it not?
Yes.
And what type of fence is that?
Uh, six-foot-high solid fence.
Okay, and as it is shown on the plan that we now have prepared by Mr. Kowinski, that fence would be behind the berm?
That's correct.
And by behind the berm, that... Okay. And by behind the berm, we, I mean between the berm and the building?
That's correct. It, uh, follows roughly along the edge of the drive and the parking lot.
Okay, the, the scenic corridor ordinance requires a different type of fence?
That's correct. It, uh, requires a fence that's at least 50% open.
Okay, uh, there was a comment, uh, in the staff report suggesting that the fence, uh, be placed on top of the berm rather than behind the berm. Is that your understanding?
That's correct.
And can that be accommodated?
Absolutely.
And do you have an opinion as a landscape architect as to whether aesthetically the six-foot solid fence would be more appropriate or the opaque fence?
Uh, personally, I would prefer a more open, uh, fence versus a solid.
And, and why is that?
Uh, I think it's more in keeping with the scenic corridor character.
Thank you. I have no further questions of this witness.
Thank you, Peter. Well, um...
One more.
Yep, proceed to your next one.
Okay. I'll call my architect. Can raise your right hand.
Testimony, you're about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Mic's off.
Guys gotta stop playing with... The button on the side...
There's a little button on the side. Keep that on, and then you press the one to go.
All right. For the record, can you state your name?
William Westhaver, W.E.S.T.H.A.F.E.R.
Mr. Westhaver, are you a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am, yeah. And seven other states.
Okay, uh, where is your office located?
I'm at the One Penn Center in Philadelphia.
And can you briefly give the board the benefit of your educational and professional background?
Sure, I have a Bachelor of Arts and a Master of Architecture degree. I've been practicing as an architect for over 40 years and have designed over 50 buildings of this type and have testified in front of 14 other boards in the state of New Jer...
He's accepting, Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Based on the testimony of Mr. Kowinski and the exhibit that's before the board, we are proposing to construct two buildings. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
Okay, can you briefly describe the two buildings?
Uh, sure. Let's go to Building A.
That's part of our submission, I guess. If it's part of our initial submission, do we, you want it marked, Mr. Bernstein? Yes, please, A4.
A4.
Will you indicate what A4 represents?
This is, these are floor pla, the floor plan and building elevations of Building A.
Which is the building closest to Mettler's?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead. So just for orientation, the, uh, top of the plan faces Mettler's Road. You can see here two designated proposed offices.
Peter, can you share your mic with him?
Why don't you, you, why don't you, why don't we share this one?
Thank you. Two proposed office areas adjacent to the parking, again, facing Mettler's. Uh, the only initial improvements are, uh, electrical and fire protection room. Adjacent to the loading dock area, we have 42 loading docks. And was mentioned earlier, we have essentially a wing wall at the front here, 60 feet deep to screen the loading docks from street views. We'll go to the next.
Okay, and what is the size of that building?
This building has been, uh, reduced in square footage from 171,000 square feet to currently 144,450 square feet.
So there was an overall...
How much of that, Mr. Landfert, is office and how much is warehouse?
Uh, this is showing a 3,000-square-foot office, um, that could vary in size depending on the user.
So as a result of the change in plans and your, uh, associate testified at the last hearing, there's a net reduction in that building of over almost 30,000 square feet, correct?
That's correct.
And in addition to the reduction of the size of the building, we, you have indicated that there is a wing wall that is being proposed?
That's correct.
Okay, and that was not on the original plans that were testified to at the last hearing?
Correct.
And that wing wall is located basically on what would be the easterly side of the building where the truck court is?
Yes, adjacent to, uh, Schoolhouse Road.
Okay, and can you indicate to the board where the mechanicals for this building will be located?
It will have small rooftop units located strategically based on the arrangement inside, and we do have a parapet wall which will, uh, screen those units as well.
So any of the mechanical equipment that needs to be located, uh, on the roof will not be visible from either Mettler's or Schoolhouse, is that correct?
That's correct.
And when you say small mechanical units, what do you mean?
The warehouse will have essentially ventilation and heating only, and the offices will have small package units, um, above the office areas.
So the, the warehouse is not air-conditioned, uh, just the office parts will be air-conditioned?
That is the current expectation, yes.
Okay, and is the building capable of handling solar panels?
Uh, build, this particular building, Building A, yes, is designed to accommodate, uh, solar panels.
Okay, and do we have, let's go to the next exhibit. Those are the...
A5.
A5, and those are the elevations of the building?
That's correct.
And can you briefly talk the elevations through with the board and the public?
Yeah, generally, uh, what I'd like to do is go through this part briefly, and then after we're done with the Building A and B exhibits, go back to the landscape renderings, which I think provide better information on the building design. So, so generally, the, the two elevations here, you can see, uh, this, this, um... So the, the, the top two are, you know, it's a split elevation. Essentially, um, the proposal here is to use, uh, a shade of go-away green so that it will blend in with the landscaping, and then we're using a variety of other colors and materials on the front elevations.
And the, those color, go-away green colors will be put on the building on the Mettler's roadside?
Correct.
Okay, and when we were here a couple of months ago, we only had partially, uh, a part of the building as go-away green, correct?
Correct.
And now we have decided to paint the entire building on the Mettler's roadside a go-away green?
That's correct.
And what is go-away green?
It's a, it's a, it's a shade of green that was developed, so essentially it recedes as you look at it. It blends in with the landscaping and is simply, um, less pronounced.
Okay. And continue down to the other side of the building so that the...
Yeah, it's really just the remainder, just walking around the entire building.
Okay, so the, the third line down is basically the loading docks?
The middle two.
Right.
I'm sorry.
And then the last two lines?
The middle two are the loading dock lines, right, and then these are the last elevations on the sides.
Okay. And then can we move on to the other building very briefly?
A6.
So it has similar characteristics to Building A in terms of the 60-foot extension facing Schoolhouse Road. Uh, in this case, we have 18 loading docks and our square footage... Sorry, I gotta check the number.
While you're checking, can you indicate for the record how many loading docks in Building A?
Building A is 42 loading docks. Building B is 18. And Building B is, has been reduced from 73,600 square feet to 70,970.
Again, the mechanicals on this building will also be on the roof?
Yes, all the characteristics are similar to, uh, Building A, except we are not proposing any go-away green shade. Otherwise, it shares the same color palette as Building A.
Okay, and, and talk about the color palette other than the go-away green. What, what, what does the building consist of as far as materials and what colors?
Uh, I'd like to save that for the renderings.
Okay. And again, you made a statement, just so the record is clear, that the smaller building is not solar ready?
That's correct.
Okay, and is not required to be under the regulations of the state of New Jersey, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. All right, can you, we go to the colored renderings?
One follow-up comment on that. Um, Link Logistics is very, uh, interested in sustainability, so this is a sustainable development. We're, we're proposing to get the building lead certified. Some of the features include LED lighting, high-energy efficiency, air-conditioning units, water-saving fixtures, uh, recycled materials, uh, managing our construction waste, and EV charging stations. So let's go to, uh, page 16. This is the A3 exhibit that we're returning to. So this is, um, actually, let's go back one page. This is that year one view, and you can see flanking the, the gray center element. That is the go-away green shade illustrating the intent of kind of receding and blending in with the landscape, just so it's less visible. Um, and as noted, when you go to the later growth trees, um, it's even less visible. So the materials are a combination of concrete panels that are painted in the colors we've talked about, gray tones, and, um, we're providing clear story lighting to introduce daylight into the interior of the warehouse building as well. Let's go to 17. And then this is a view surrounding the entrance off of Schoolhouse Road. Again, we're using, uh, kind of highlighting the corners on the case of Building B, which is the building on the left. That's a proposed office area, so essentially treating it more like a front and making it a little more pronounced. We've got a little screen wall on the top. You can see the parapet rises up a little bit. That's really just to, uh, relieve the parapet wall, give it a little more interest and a little more articulation on the corner of the building.
And again, you are, you're familiar with the neighborhood and the other warehouses that have, uh, been developed along Schoolhouse?
Yeah, and one, uh, I would say distinguishing feature here is, as was mentioned in the civil engineering testimony, we have an internal loading dock. Most of the buildings along Schoolhouse, the docks are not screened and are highly visible. In this case, by facing the docks inwardly, we do not have that condition.
Okay, and also when discussing the design of, of these buildings, uh, with the owner, uh, was there an intent to provide more of an office feel, at least along Schoolhouse, as opposed to a warehouse feel?
Yeah, very much so. Link Logistics has a high, high standard of quality for materials and articulation, and we've, uh, we've proceeded with this building in that vein.
Okay, uh, and what are... Okay. And what are the heights of these buildings?
40 feet to the roof, four-foot parapet, and then the screen wall just steps up another two feet again to provide that additional articulation.
Okay. And so the buildings comply with the height requirement of the ordinance?
They do.
Okay. If I can get the lights back on, I've got to see if we touched on all of Mr. Healy's comments, because I can't see them.
So while they're playing with the lights, Mr. Landfrit, 46 feet to the top for Building B?
Under your ordinance, the parapet doesn't count.
Okay, so 44?
It's 40, it's a 40-foot-high building.
And what about Building A?
Then there's a four-foot parapet, which does not count towards the height, and then another two feet to the screen wall.
So both 40 feet?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Healy, in his report, talked about the design of the building, which you did testify to, and the screening you testified to, and the representation. So I think we did address all of his comments in your direct testimony. Let me see if we have any architectural comments in the architects, or I'm sorry, in engineering. I think we addressed all of the comments, so I have no further questions of this witness at this time.
Okay, thanks, Peter. We're almost, you've kept us almost exactly on schedule, so let's take a, roughly a 10-minute, but 8:55. Let's come back at 8:55, and we'll see if there's any board questions and open to the public. Okay, so we're going to start with board questions for any of the three witnesses that testified tonight, so I'll start to my right, and we'll work down the board to see if there's any questions for any of the three witnesses.
So is that me?
But I'm just giving you the first shot. Doesn't mean it's your only shot.
Yeah, sure. So when we discuss the sound, can you elaborate as to what the sound implication or sound pollution would be sort of beyond the scope of the building and affecting the so-called, the local residents around there? I guess I'm addressing all three of you, since we had all three of you, so any one of you is free to answer.
Are you talking about the noise from the mechanical equipment?
The noise from the mechanical, and I know that you had mentioned that there won't be much air conditioning at first, I think given that it's a spec building, but what if somebody, a heavy user comes in, what would that look like, or sound like, to be more accurate?
So if the warehouse were required to be air-conditioned, those units would be placed in the warehouse portion of the building, which would be toward the back. So they're, you know, an additional 100 feet or so from the front wall, and therefore, a couple hundred feet from Metlers Road, so it's a pretty good distance. And again, we have the parapet on top as well, both for visual screening, so I think that we would be well under any limits of allowable decibel level. We do not have the equipment spec currently, so I can't give you a precise numerical answer.
Yeah, I guess the difficult thing for us is that we're approving the building now, so we have to envision what it could be, right? So would you suspect that it would be audible from the local neighborhood?
Whatever we do, we'll be compliant with ordinance. Well, that's, which is the standard that we're held to.
Okay. Regarding the stormwater, some mention was made of some basins and retention. What would be the sort of overall implication of creating this building? Does it make things better or worse? As we know that there's been recent flooding there, even with just the light storm that passed the past week, so does this make it better or worse?
The proposed project reduces peak flow runoffs, which is required by the New Jersey...
Can you speak up? I can barely hear you, so I'm sure they can't hear you back there.
Sorry about that. The proposed project reduces peak flow runoffs for both the two 10 and 100-year storms in accordance with the New Jersey regulations, so it's reducing the flows.
Landfrit, can we get your client, Steve and I, I've had trouble picking him up at times.
I apologize.
Yeah, just speak a little slower, and maybe in plainer language so that we can all understand.
Or can you yell? You've got a baby now, you can yell.
The project, so the stormwater design is designed to control the flow of stormwater from the site, so it takes all of our areas, controls the water through a dowel structure, and basically holds the water back and controls it so that we were reducing the peak flow, so the highest flow of the existing condition. We're reducing that down by certain percentages that are required by New Jersey. So we are making the less peak in the, on the major storms, so it'll help the situation as far as the existing condition.
So you're in professional opinion, by adding these structures, it will actually be better in terms of stormwater management than what the current conditions are?
The current condition, there's no control of stormwater.
Correct.
So we, as designed, we can now take the water, hold it back, detain it, and control how it affects and goes off the site.
Okay. In terms, do you want me to just keep going, or should I? Okay, so in terms of the hours of operation, what are we looking at for this building?
The, we don't have a user for the building, so we can't give you hours of operation. However, there is nothing in your ordinances that restricts the hours of operation, so it would be basically dependent on who the end user is. It could be a 24/7, and it may not be.
Okay. So you had discussed the light spillage as well. Can you sort of give me a little more detail as to what you meant by, it sounded like the lights would be facing towards the building in a way, but how do we know that there won't be more light spillage that goes towards the local neighborhoods?
So the fixtures have back light preventers, essentially a shield, if you will, on the back of the light that doesn't allow the light to travel behind it, essentially. It pushes all the light towards the building and not toward the Metlers or the residents.
But as it reflects off the building, won't that make the building itself just a brighter building?
These lights are 15 feet tall, so the idea is to light up the parking lot and the sidewalk adjacent to the building, not necessarily the building itself.
Okay. In terms of the plants around, is there a reason why we can't perhaps start with more mature plants? I know that you're going with what it seems like is within the code, but given the concerns that we have of 10 years of waiting for it to actually have some type of coverage, is there a way that we can have more mature plants put around there?
10 years was an example. And as we were discussing, if we want to see what 10 years of growth is like, the southern end of Canal Walk kind of represents that same thing, installed at roughly the same size that we're presenting and what it ultimately gets to. But sure, I'm happy to discuss that idea further.
Okay. And there were certain areas that I didn't understand why the coverage wasn't as much. So I know Mr. Landfrit sort of pointed to one, which is the pond view, but then there's also the loading dock entrance that seemed to not have much coverage even after the 10 years. Is there something, is there a reason why that can't have more trees or closer to the road or make it more, so that it's more discreet?
I'm sorry, we can certainly look at adding more trees near the loading dock entrance, yes. There are fewer trees back by the pond because we're trying to comply mostly with the scenic corridor, which asks for open vistas, particularly of water.
Okay, and what about the loading dock entrance?
That's where I started. I said, I'm certainly happy to look at trying to include more trees there.
I guess my question was, why wasn't that part of the original? Was there a reason to not include more there and to leave it more exposed?
Well, we don't have the plan up, but it's planted to the same density.
So, Landfrit, can we have the exhibit placed back up? I know Metzkevitzky's in the midst of doing it.
So if you can go to the loading dock entrance picture? Yeah, that was the one, yeah. So this is the, even after 10 years, it doesn't seem like it did much.
Yeah, it may be that these trees were rendered at the wrong size.
So is it your testimony, then, that what you would actually recommend would actually provide more coverage than what's displayed here?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that these trees show up as a different size than the other 10-year trees.
So if they were to show up as the size of the other trees, would that provide more coverage?
It would provide more coverage.
I think that was my question, but, okay.
And Mr. Shabon, just for the record, we can look at adding some additional trees at the front entrance if it is necessary to provide additional screening. We have no objection to doing that.
Okay, thank you. Now, in terms of the truck routes, are we going to have a traffic?
See, I mean, we're going to do traffic the next hearing?
We're going to do it next?
So, yeah.
So I'll just pause my questions for now, because I've taken up a lot of airtime.
Okay. Bob?
One question. Has there been any...
I'm concerned about Summerhill across the street from your truck driveways. Has there been any concern about lights from trucks coming out of the driveway, going directly into that development? Is there anything that has been discussed, and is there anything that can be done if you view it as a problem?
I believe, again, the driveway, we have to get to the road away, but I believe Summerhill, I'm sorry. I believe the, you know, we have to get to the road there, but the opposite end, I believe, has a berm and landscaping as well. That should shield any lighting from tying into the roadway at that location.
But my concern is that as you come out of your driveway, it basically lines up with the Summerhill driveway and the houses that border it.
I believe it lines up with the back of their retention pond. That's along Schoolhouse Road.
Yeah, there is a detention pond there, but you're still reflecting into that development.
So here again, I'm going to the aerial, Exhibit A, 1A.
Well, maybe you could take a look.
I believe the driveway is in this general location along the property line, so there's a, you know, buffering as well as a detention pond before it gets toward any residences.
Okay, the other thing, you're still operating now with a deficit of trees, am I correct? You still owe...
Correct.
Has there been any communication or thought? Well, first of all, I'd like to say I want to see them planted somewhere, all of them, somewhere on this site or elsewhere. And my elsewhere involves communication with Canal Walk Community Association. For whatever reason, I think the buffer along Canal Walk that goes around the corner of Schoolhouse Lane and Metlers Road, number one, it seems to be sparse on landscaping compared to the rest. Number two, the buffer itself seems to be a lot lower. Possibly, some of those trees could be done cooperatively on the Canal Walk buffer in those areas instead of, you know, if you're having trouble finding places for them, you know, on-site. We've done that before. We did it with Somerset Run, where they actually planted trees on the property across the street. It takes some communication. The other thing, I understand your spec. Hours of operation are a little cloudy, but I would like to see a 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM hours of operation. I understand the ordinance doesn't require it. No ordinance has ever been written that covers every possible thing that needs to be covered. I think the closeness and the fact that this is adjacent on two sides to two very large residential areas ought to merit consideration to a limitation of hours. And that would also limit a little bit any issues with headlights coming out of the driveway going into another development. I'll say one thing as a compliment. I do understand what Mr. Shabon is talking about with bigger trees. I think we should try for that. I sat on this board when Canal Walk was built. Canal Walk along Metlers Road was nothing, when it was finished, was nothing but a berm and a few twigs planted on it. All right? It absolutely violated every tenant of a scenic corridor that you could find. It did take the 10 years, the landscaping did grow, so there is history there that it does work. But I think the point is well-taken that maybe we could start with some larger things.
Mr. Landfrit, is your client willing to provide the overall tree plan requested?
Here, all the comments, I don't want to respond at this time. I have to discuss it with my client, so we're going to be back at another meeting. We'll have some answers for you.
Can we get some kind of idea before the end of the evening? Because the next meeting is not the time to come back and then tell us whether or not you're going to have the plan or not.
And we may not have an answer. Again, there's a lot of things we've got to look at. There are now different requests from Mr. Shabon and different requests from Mr. Thomas. We have to assimilate all of them. I'm sure there are other comments that are going to be coming from other board members. I would like to be able to digest them all and see if they all work together, because that's the intent of this, to make it work. So I would rather hear all the comments and then, you know, huddle with my client and give you answers.
And we'll provide you, or I will try to provide you, by sort of summarizing what the board feels before the end of the night as well, in fairness, just harmonizing what the board thinks. May here, if you have any questions?
I have no questions at the moment. The questions I had were about the trees and the mature trees, which have already been asked.
Thank you.
I have questions and comments. First question is regarding the sidewalk on Schoolhouse Road. I would be in favor of it as an extension to the sidewalk on the Metlers roadside so that residents can walk further. I'm also concerned about the warehouses we're developing because you all tend to, I don't want to generalize, but in this particular warehouse, I'm concerned about on-site pedestrian connectivity from building to building. Right now, that isn't shown. If I am to walk from one building to the next as a pedestrian, I don't see the connectivity shown there. So it would be great to see a plan for how pedestrians can safely walk from one building to the next. I don't know if you've addressed bicycle accommodations on the site. Lastly, the trees, I'm not a tree expert, but I know trees look different in the wintertime than they do in the summertime. Can you speak to landscape architect here? What percentage of what trees would help to protect it during the wintertime as well from a visual standpoint?
I'm going to start that by clarifying some of my testimony from earlier. We actually have more evergreen trees than we do deciduous, so I was wrong in that. The intent is to essentially have a staggered row of evergreens that would form that buffer all the way along the perimeter. Can you say that again? Instead of planting, like I said, we're trying to do a more naturalized planting rather than an engineered look. So instead of a straight berm with a row of hedges on top of it, we're trying to stagger them kind of closer to the road and further back, but it's essentially a completed... them kind of closer to the road and further back, but it's essentially a completed line of evergreens.
Okay. Also, I understand this is a warehouse, but it should be inviting if it's to be built. There should be a connection from said sidewalk to the front door of the building to welcome people should they want to arrive by foot. I think it helps to dignify the site a lot better. Other than that, it would have been great to see what this looks like at night for the landscape architect. Given how many trees now we're seeing and the maturity of those trees, do you have any concern with how that conflicts with the lighting on the site, creating dark spots that could be a safety concern?
I don't think I have any concerns with that, no.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Couple of my concerns or questions have been addressed, but I'll go on the record. I think sidewalk on Schoolhouse should be constructed. The board has, through other applications over the past few years, tried to get connectivity from businesses and warehouses on Schoolhouse and Cotton Tail to retail uses on the corner of Elizabeth and Schoolhouse. And I think that, as Charles said, this should be continued. I'm fine with not disturbing anything on Metlers. I think the second building should be solar-ready. There's no reason that both buildings shouldn't be solar-ready. Landscaping, a lot of folks have already made some comments, but I'll make a couple more. I would like to know what the plan is that the landscaping is maintained over the years and so that year 10, if to be believed, year 20 and year 30 look the same. We all know that trees die, performance bonds wane, and I'd like to know how that residents can be assured that in this case, although I will admit that the landscaping you show is far more aggressive and comprehensive than other warehouses on Schoolhouse that have been constructed for years, but this also, the situation on the ground has changed in that we have far more residential abutting those warehouses. I would like to, as Charles suggested also, I'd like to see how your building is screened and the landscaping looks. You've shown us pictures in the summer when everything is very verdant. I would like to see what that looks like in the fall. I would like to see the applicant come back and show us what it looks like in the fall when only the evergreens are there to screen. I think that would be fair. I think those are all my comments for now. So I continue to my left.
I have, well, I'll start out by saying that really looking at the planting plan, there's considerably more planting in the vicinity of the truck entrance than is shown in the rendering, in particularly the ilex opaca right down to the corner there. So I think it's more your rendering is deficient compared to what you're actually proposing. And ilex opaca is evergreen broadly, so as long as the deer don't eat it too much, the deer will eat holly if they're hungry enough, I can testify from my own experience. I wanted, although I don't know whether this falls under any of your expertise, I wanted to supplement the Environmental Commission's suggestion a little bit about the noise from forklifts backing up, which I think everybody, particularly, I've heard from people in Canal Walk that they can hear it from the Amazon facility, beep, 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 when the forklifts back up. One suggestion is that there's a white noise that can be more focused and does not go as far. Another suggestion, which I owe to Mr. Arnold Schmidt, who probably go on it more, is that strobe lights can be used for the same function to warn people that the vehicle is backing up. And again, particularly with the new construction with the wing walls, these should be pretty much not visible to the neighbors. With respect to the lighting suggestion that I had, it's just, I know that one purpose of lighting is security of the building, particularly where there are entrances, but the entrances will be small, the building is much higher. You just make sure that the lighting goes no higher than the entrances to the building on the Metlers roadside so that the people across the road won't be seeing this brightly lit all the way up the wall of the building. Keep the lighting down, keep the upper part of the building unlit because you don't have to advertise it. So I think those are my main comments. Oh, a comment the Environmental Commission typically makes is that white pines, over the years, tend to drop their lower branches and not be good buffering. Now, if you also have the six-foot-high opaque fence, this is probably not a problem. If you have, and what I would suggest probably is that you have the opaque fence, the solid fence along Schoolhouse Road and then a partial fence or opaque but letting some light through fence along Metlers, perhaps splits the difference between what the ordinances say in different places. You mentioned Virginia pine. Is that a pine which doesn't drop? You have that on the Schoolhouse Road front. Is that a pine that doesn't drop lower branches?
It doesn't drop its branches the way white pine does, but yes, they will drop their lower branches as they get shaded out.
Okay, but I think that's good to use something which retains more of the lower branches. And then, there's always my comment that duckweed is a floating species. It's not something you plant in the usual sense. I imagine you can introduce it into the pond if it's available, but it's not a typical nursery species.
Ted, I think you need to speak into the mic a little bit. I think you need to speak into the mic a little bit.
I keep getting closer to the mic and... People keep shoving you that way. Okay. Judging from the audience response, they have heard it. I think those are my main comments at this time. Of course, if you don't, I guess either the hours of operation or the substitute backup warnings would be things that would have to be required of the tenant for the building, but I think they are conditions which the planning board could put on the application, on the approval. So, and you're aware of concern for maintenance, particularly of the constructed wetlands, and who will carry out the maintenance? Okay, I'll leave it at that.
Thanks, Ted. Councilman?
Thank you, Chairman. I just don't want to repeat all the previous comments. Did I hear that you're going to incorporate all the recommendations of the TRC report and the engineering report, except for the extra driveway that the engineer recommended? Did I hear that?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. So as for the extra driveway for the cars, I feel the width of the driveway and for the trucks and the cars, if we could work with engineering engineers here to see whether we can widen that a little bit, if at all possible, to make it a little more safe for the entering vehicles there. I'm not sure it's possible, but you may explore that. In lieu of the second driveway, perhaps we could explore widening that and giving a little more room for those vehicles. Secondly, on the parking lots, I know you have the minimum number of EV spots there. Knowing that there are more electric cars in circulation, I would like to see or explore if you can double that number, even though it's not required. That could probably encourage more electric vehicles coming into the lot, you know, less pollution, less noise, et cetera, et cetera, down the road. I think those are my two comments.
Thanks.
Hi. So many of you asked so many great questions, so I just want to reiterate, so it's on the record. Yes, I agree to the sidewalk on Schoolhouse as well, so I just wanted to say that. And yes, to the solar panel ready on Building B as well. Two clarifying questions. One, is it able, if I missed it, are you able to give me the estimate of the number of evergreens that you're planning to put in?
They are on the landscape plan. I think Mr. Kowinski can bring that number up.
It's 154 on a 573?
154. Okay. And if you could just explain, I know that there's a deficit of approximately 298 trees. Could you just explain how you arrived at that number or why a deficit of 298?
So the ordinance requires a certain replacement for every tree you remove, so I believe, oh, I'm sorry, one second, let me hold the number. So we are removing 406 trees. The required replacement for those trees is 871, and we're providing 573 trees. So that's where the deficit is.
Okay.
Of 298.
Okay.
So just to clarify, there will be more trees on the site after we build the building than there are now?
Correct.
But there's still a deficit under the ordinance for replacement?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
I just wanted to thank you for leaving more trees, particularly along the Schoolhouse Road front than there were in the original plan. Existing trees always look better, particularly at the beginning. If you go two properties to the east, you'll see some existing trees close to Schoolhouse. I personally argued for those trees when that facility came in.
Yeah, and I think, Peter, you got a pretty clear direction from the board that to the extent possible with 298, you'd rather see them planted on-site than to put a donation into shade tree fund, so to the extent.
Again, I think that's why we want to hear all the comments and then come back to you.
I think I can definitely synthesize that one for you. So I'm going to just turn it over to our board attorney for a second to just explain how we're going to do the public portion and who can come to the mic and who cannot.
Well, for the purposes, Mr. Chairman of tonight's meeting, and I understand that I suspect the public portion is going to go into the next meeting in June based on the time. If you are currently being represented by one of two counsel, Mr. Lieberman or Mr. Cohen, either on behalf of the objectors or you are representatives of the Canal Walk Homeowners Association, you are not permitted to speak in the public portion because you are represented by counsel. Otherwise, you have the right to speak so long as you are not on either party's list. It is my recommendation to the board that Mr. Lieberman go first as the recognized objector on behalf of his clients, and then, I don't believe Mr. Cohen is here tonight, so depending on where we are in the next half hour, I suspect we will be back in June. I'm assuming, Mr. Lanford, that your clients will all be here.
All of my witnesses will be here next meeting.
Thank you. I know, but we'll cross that when we get there.
So with that, let's...
I just have a follow-up question on the landscaping. Between the deciduous trees and the evergreens, the mature trees, let's see if you were to plan the mature trees, which has a chance of more survival on the mature side, the evergreen or the deciduous?
I would say the deciduous.
Okay.
Mr. Lieberman is the recognized objector for this application. If you wish to cross-examine any and or all of Mr. Lanford's witnesses, the time to start is now.
That'd be great.
By the way, Mr. Lieberman, for my own indication, the stenographer here is whose? Mr. Lanford's, I'll remember that, thank you. Mr. Lieberman, can you place on the record who you are, who you represent, and your firm?
Relax, people, relax. Jesus Christ. Two seconds. Oh, can you hear me? Oh, good. Okay, good evening, everybody. I'm fighting a cold, so I'll do the best I can, but I'm Stuart Lieberman. I'm from the firm of Lieberman, Blacker, and Sinkovich in Princeton, and I'm here for the Citizen Warehouse Action Group. We were here before. We provided the names of our clients already, the members. And I do have some questions for you that I'd like to just go over. Okay. Let me start with the engineer, please. Is there a problem? Oh. Just tell me when you're ready, sure. Thank you.
As you have found, folks, who the most important person in this room is.
That's right.
We have all learned for many years in this business.
And I'd much rather have this than one of those taped things that everything I say they attribute to you, Mr. Bernstein. Are you ready, ma'am? Okay, so it's Stuart Lieberman again, okay, from the, okay, very good. To the engineer, thank you, sir. In reviewing your papers, there was a company called Hillis Carnes that did some of the Sewell's work, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and in Section 2, and you're familiar with Hillis Carnes conclusions, isn't that right, sir?
Yes.
Okay. In their report, in Section 2, it was entitled subsection determinations, and they indicated that excavating was extremely difficult and that something called refusal was encountered at shallow elevations across the site. Do you remember that language?
Not specifically, but go ahead. Not specifically, but go, go ahead.
Do you, but do, do you have an understanding that Hills Carnes found that refusal was found throughout much of the site?
Yes.
Do, what is refusal?
It's, again, there, the equipment that they were using...
You just use the mic, yeah, I can't, I can't even hear you. Thanks.
The equipment that they used, uh, hit a, hit a section that was, that was refusal, wouldn't let them dig anymore.
Do you, do you, refu... It's all right, it's all right. Yeah. I think we're okay. Refusal, refusal is a situation where they're trying to take borings, and for whatever reason, they're not able to penetrate, isn't that the idea?
Correct.
Okay, and so, do you have an understanding that there was a lot of refusal at this property based in the Hills Carnes report?
Yes.
And the refusal was in part associated with the fact that there's a limiting clay zone, isn't that correct?
That's correct.
And the clay, uh, there was, there were numerous test borings that they tried to take, that they were not able to take because of the clay zone, isn't that correct?
I, I don't know, it's not bad, to be honest with you, I'm sorry.
Take into the mic.
Okay. Did, was your answer that you're not sure, I, I have a little...
I'm not sure it is.
The, um, do you, do you have a recollection that infiltration testing wasn't able to be completed in test pits four, six, seven, and eight because of this refusal? Do you have an understanding of that?
Testing was performed on the site extensively, a ton of testing was done on the site, uh, to, to determine the soils, soil group, uh, of the subject site.
Well, one of the things that you needed to do in order to design your stormwater system was to determine the depth of, of the groundwater, isn't that correct?
Correct.
Did you see in any of the soil boring results, an indication of where the, of how deep this, the, um, water table was?
Yes.
How, what soil boring results indicated what the depth of groundwater was, do you know?
So there were, again, there was multiple testing done on the site, Hills Carnes performed some testing, but then we repeated testing inside the, uh, the wet season to determine the, the seasonal water tables.
And, and were you able to do that throughout the site, or were there, was it only in isolated parts of the site where you were able to make that determination?
In the locations of the proposed basins for, for the seasonal water tables.
The, as part of your analysis, you indicated that the, it was your belief, and it might have been Hills Carnes' belief, I don't know which one it was, that the soil type was D rather than B or C, do you remember that?
That was Hills Carnes' determination, correct.
It was Hills Carnes', but you're here on, on their behalf effectively, because you're the engineer for the site, right? Well, we'll take it one at a time and see what happens. The, the, the significance of the B, C versus D rating is that if the soils are classified as D, you don't have to what?
There's no infiltration currently on site if they're D.
It, it means you don't have to infiltrate as part of your system too, isn't that correct?
You're maintaining what's, what's currently out on the site.
Right, but under the DEP regulations, if they're D soils, there is no obligation for you to recharge, yes?
Correct.
And that's the position that you're taking, right?
That, that's what the testing showed.
Well, the testing has to be done in a manner that's consistent with the DEP regulations, isn't that correct?
Correct.
And it, the engineer for the board questioned whether or not the testing satisfied the DEP. DEP has special regulations where, when the soils are mapped one way, and you're asserting that they're another way, there are very specific requirements that you need to undertake in order to remap, redesignate the soils, right?
Correct.
You understand that some of the comments initially indicated that there wasn't proof that you satisfied the DEP requirements, are you aware of those comments?
We, we received the comments, and we had Hills Carnes prepare the additional requested information and provide to the engineer to satisfy, to satisfy, uh, to a satisfaction.
The, um, so you're telling me that the municipal engineer is satisfied with your conclusions that the soils are D and not B or C even though they're mapped B or C?
I'll let him respond, but, yeah, yes.
Okay. Okay, well, I guess we'll, we'll hear from, we'll hear from him when, when he deems that to be appropriate. Um, there's wetlands that are noted on the property, right?
Correct.
And some of the wetlands you've considered to be, uh, isolated wetlands, right?
Correct.
Did you make that determination, or did somebody else make that determination?
I did not, someone else did.
Do you know who did?
The, again, we have a pending LOI with the D, O, D, DEP, we had a previous LOI that just expired that indicated it was isolated wetlands, so we, we're getting it recertified for that area. So the DEP originally considered it isolated wetlands, we're, we're currently pending with an LOI on that, on that property.
Do you have an understanding as to whether or not the soils in the areas that you identify as wetlands are, in many instances, similar to the soils that are adjacent to the wetlands?
I can't comment.
You, you don't know if that's true. Would you understand that if that were true, that would be one indication that they're not isolated?
Again, we, we have a pending application with the DEP, whatever the DEP says as far as the, if it's isolated or not, that, that's what we'll follow.
Okay, are you in a position to, to give testimony as to whether the soil types in the wetlands are similar to the soil types adjacent to the wetlands? Are you able to give testimony?
I'm not.
On several of the borings that were undertaken, there was an indication that wetness was noted, but that you couldn't determine the seasonal high water table, are you familiar with those conclusions?
Again, everything we provided indicated the seasonal water table on the, during the wet season, as was provided, and the soil, uh, soil testing from Hills Carnes was indicating that it was D soils.
The, when, be, let's go back to the soil types, because of the clay that's in the soil, won't special measures have to be undertaken in order to construct on this property?
Again, any, any type of special considerations would be outlined in the geotech report, which will be followed by the contractor.
I know, but you're, they're not here. So let me ask you if you can answer, if you can't, you can, I appreciate that. Isn't it true that because the soil type is heavily clay, water is going to have to be introduced into the ground in order to soften up the soil so that you could work with it?
I can't comment.
You don't know that, right? And, and so you don't know if that, if water is introduced, you don't know whether or not it's going to cause flooding along any adjacent properties because of the water that would have to be introduced to work with that soil, you don't know?
Again, all, all soil erosion measures will be, you know, implemented as part of this project in accordance with the soil erosion control plan to control any type of, uh, influence on that.
I'm not talking about soil erosion, what I'm asking about is, do you have an understanding that when you work with soils of this type, which are heavily clay, water has to be introduced into the ground so that this clay becomes more pliable and workable so that construction can occur? Do you know, do you know, do you have that understanding?
Again, I, I can't com- comment on that.
When I was asking you about the municipal engineer's position in note 21, um, the, the municipal engineer, CME stated in note 21 that Leek Logistics is attempting to re-categorize the soils from C and B to HSGD, but that, and the, the note was they didn't follow the DEP procedures. I don't know if there's been more recent responses, but at that time, do you know, has that been corrected, and has it been determined by this municipal engineer that that's no longer an issue?
Again, we resubmitted, uh, new testing and provided the, the, uh, in the testing, just the requirement showing that we outlined everything in the, the chapter 12, and we submitted it to the board, and that, that the comment was not, no longer in their review letter. So our understanding that, that it's been addressed.
Can I ask Mr. Healy if there's an update, just so I know? Mr. Bernstein, is that okay?
I'm not the engineer, Mr. Max.
Yes, sir, sorry, excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Healy, that, I do, yes.
Okay, so what, our original, the comment that you're men- mentioning is not a, as part of our latest letter, what the applicant had to do as part of the BMP, which is the best management practices of the DEP, is he had to use additional testing in order to have enough logs to do the reclassification, which he provided to our office. It appears it's been provided in accordance with the BP, uh, regulations. Now, to note too, there's other outside agencies that are going to have to make that determination and agree with it as well, and that'd be the DRCC and the DEP as well.
So, okay, so the, thank you for that clarification, I appreciate it. So it, the DEP also, oh, is, so DEP's going to be reviewing the stormwater in this case because they have a flood hazard permit, is that why? Because if, there's certain permits that trigger DEP review of stormwater, is that one of them?
I'll defer to the, the design engineer.
Is that, is that one of them, is that true?
So the DEP, uh, does not review on wetlands applications of this kind. Uh, we have review from the DRCC, which again has been accepted, no comments on, on that. We have approval from the SCD, which again approved our, our stormwater design.
I, well, I have a question for you about the driveway, and there's been questions already, um, given to you and comments by some of the board members, but the requirement in this zone is 12 foot wide, right?
For the scenic corridor.
Right, that's right, because we're in the scenic corridor. And your driveway is at the entrance much wider, what's the, what is it?
I believe, I believe that the smaller driveway is 24 feet wide, and then the larger is, I think, 36, but let me check.
Is there any way that you could stick with the 12 feet by having the, just a one-way road for the trucks?
No.
So they come in one, I mean, it's, it's so much larger than what's allowed in the, in, in the area, why can't you have a one-way road and keep it 12 feet?
Again, I, I think the, the requirement is more geared toward a residential-type access point, where one car, one car would be coming out. The safety, and, and our, our traffic engineer will go into the, uh, access impacts of that, but, you know, it, it should stay, you know, this wide to allow for safety of, of the trucks entering and exiting the site.
Okay. Um, in terms of the noise issues that you, you were asked questions by some of the board members, did you do the environmental impact statement that was submitted, was that you?
Yes.
Okay. You're from Dynamic, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Um, you didn't do any, and your conclusion was there's not going to be noise, uh, exceedances, right? That's what you said in your report, right?
Correct, we'll follow any, you know, statute required by the state.
Were you able to do any modeling? Because you've got, you have 42 truck bags, right?
Six.
No, in one of the bill, thank you, everybody. In one of the, in one of the warehouses, you have 42, right?
Yeah, correct.
And then, and, and in total, it's 60. How many trucks can be on that site, do you expect to be on that site at any given time?
Again, I'll, I'll defer to the traffic engineer when he gives his testimony for that.
Did you do any modeling? I mean, when you consider the air brakes, and when you consider the noise of the trucks when they drop the, whatever that thing is that goes to the ground, or, you know, when you have the OSHA backup sounds from the trucks, did you, are, do you know whether or not modeling, noise modeling is available in order to determine whether a noise exceedance is anticipated?
I'm not aware.
You're not aware? All right. I, I'll, we're going to bring on an expert who's a noise expert, he's going to show you can, we'll do that the next time we're here. Um, but, so then, if you didn't do any modeling, what was the factual basis that you relied on when you said you didn't expect any exceedances of the DEP or local noise ordinances?
Again, mainly the distance, uh, from the property, and then as well as any type of buildings, so again, we have a large building that's blocking the loading dock areas.
But did you do any, like, are there any standardized books or something that you could go to and say with that distance and that number of vehicles, there shouldn't be an expectation, or did you sort of wing it by saying, based on experience, that's what I think?
Again, the project will comply with any sort of noise requirement that, that's under, for the ordinance.
I, I'm, I'm just asking how you came to the conclusion that there wouldn't be exceedances, was it experience or anything more than that?
I indicated the distance and the blocking of the buildings.
I see. Okay, thank you. In, in terms of the 24/7 operation, I know Franklin doesn't have an hour of operation, but are you telling me that it's conceivable that at 3:00 in the morning, we can have operations at this place? Is that, is that what you're saying?
That is allowed by ordinance.
Well, is it, Mr., Mr. Lieberman, just, just for my edification, Mr. Landford, please, ordinance is silent, correct?
Right.
So it doesn't allow for, it doesn't prevent, correct?
It doesn't allow, nor does it prevent, but every other application involving warehouses has allowed a 24/7 operation.
However, it is still ultimately up to the board, correct?
I may not agree with that, but we'll, we'll figure that out.
I, do you have any other que, I don't know who was just talking, it's, it's like, I'm, I'm okay, Mr. Bernstein, I can keep going, thank you. Thank you. I don't even know, I can't even hear, I don't even know, but I, I'm sure, but, um, I want to go over the trees issue a little bit with you too. I, I got confused with the trees. Oh, you know what, it's the, it's the landscape architect I need to speak with on that one. So I appreciate you passing the mic. So I, I got confused, and it might be because of my note-taking, so just help me. I thought at one time you said that there was a majority of evergreens, did you say that?
Yes, I said there, there was a majority of, uh, evergreens versus canopy trees.
So this is where I might have messed up, and I might have. I thought you said that 154 out of 573 were the evergreens, did you say that, or did I hear something different?
Uh, it's 154 out of a total of all the trees, including, uh, the, the flowering trees.
So doesn't that mean it's a minority then?
No. The, the answer, the question that I answered earlier was, uh, evergreen trees versus canopy trees.
Okay. So, so a fair way to put it would be, the evergreens are a minority of the total number of vegetations, is that correct?
That's fair to say.
Okay, okay. Um, what, can you, can you explain to me why you need a variance for the deficit of 235 trees? In other words...
Objection, that is not a variance that is necessary, the ordinance allows if there's a tree deficit to, uh, pay into a tree fund, but it is not a variance, Mr. Lieberman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Landford. Um, but the, the, the reason I'm asking is because in this zone, the preference is to replant on site, right? I mean, you'd agree with me, when you read the language for this zone, the preference, the number one preference is on site, and then if it isn't, can't be reasonably done on site, you can go off-site or, or give to the fund. So why can't this reasonably be done on site?
As I said earlier, we're trying to respect the scenic corridor, which asks for, uh, open vistas. If we wanted to fill in some of that, um, and take on more of the BI, uh, zone, we could get more trees on site.
Okay, so you could, so you could comply with the, with the preferred tree, uh, replacement mode, which is you can keep them on lot one if you want to, is that correct?
Yep, there is space there to do that, yes.
Respectfully, I would ask you, it's up to the board, but I hope you look at it. I bet you my clients do. Um, let me look at what else I have for you, please, thank you. The mechanicals on top of the building, in terms of noise, sir, there's no measurements. I'm going to the engineer. I'm going back to Dynamic, thank you. In, in terms of the machinery on top, no science at all right now in terms of what noise that's going to generate, right? We don't have any readings or anything that we can actually provide in terms of decibels, is that right?
I, I could speak to that if you like, I'm the architect, and we're providing the, when we get to that point, we'll be designing the mechanical systems. So just for a point of reference, as we mentioned, we're allowing for a 3,000 square-foot office in the front facing metlars. Um, so to air-condition a 3,000 square-foot office would be equivalent to a single-family house in square footage.
Right.
So we're, what, 150 or 200 feet away from the residential area, as opposed to a single-family house, which is probably 20 feet away from a, uh, ground-mounted condenser of its neighbor, so it'll be de minimis.
No, and I appreciate that. I, I would imagine that just for the air conditioning of those small office spaces would be de minimis, but you have other mechanicals though, right? It's not just...
Ventilation and heating.
And, and that's what I was asking about, not the little air conditioners for the very small space, I'm not too worried about that.
That's fine.
Although, in the aggregate, it can have an impact. Are you going to have a noise expert test, is somebody going to go over this in terms of the noise or not?
We'll review this with our client, even though we haven't specified the equipment, we can get decibel readings based on the anticipated equipment at the property line.
I'm not the board, but I know... I'm not the board, but I know my clients would like to hear that a lot, but I don't know what the board wants to do, so, and I can't ask you to do anything, it's up to, up to the board, but I know my clients would like to hear that. Let me just see what else I have for you, thank you. You know, when you showed the pictures of the, of the trees, this is for the, I'm sorry, going back and forth, for the landscape architect, when you showed pictures of the trees, we saw year 1, where there was, in many instances, not all that much visual shielding, and then year 10, where it looked to be a fair amount more. Can you give an estimate of how many years it really would take to provide some actual visual shielding? Because it's like 1 to 10, but it's obviously somewhere in the middle, how long does it take?
I, I don't understand the question, I mean, he's testified as to what year 1 is and what year 10 is.
Right.
And obviously, trees grow incrementally between those years, I don't know what you're asking.
So, what I'm asking is, how long does it take before you have enough tree cover based on your planting plan, that you have a reasonable visual shield? Because year 1 didn't do too much, we saw the pictures, so how long does it take where it really gets to that point?
Again, I'm going to object, the pictures speak for themselves, and I think the pictures showed, especially along metlars, that there is significant screening in year 1. The board will have to make that determination, but the pictures speak for themselves.
Well, unlike paper speakers, the pictures are a proposed understanding based on what's being planted, correct, Mr. Lanford?
That is correct.
Okay. I think what Mr. Lieberman is trying to ask, and I am not here necessarily to translate for him, is, is there a point in time, based on the year 1 versus year 10 pictures your client is proposing, that the board accepts as truthful? Do we start to see a turn from the traditional type of minimal, my words, landscape cover versus what is being proposed as something significantly more mature, based on his expertise as a landscape architect?
That was the question I wanted to ask, thank you, Mr. Bernstein.
All the trees are going to have a-
If you can.
All the trees are going to have a different growth rate, what I could- Yeah, I don't know. Okay, I could point to some trees that we planted in 2020 that were 4-inch caliper that are now 8-inch caliper, meaning they've doubled in size in less than three years.
But, you came to a conclusion, or you came to a proposal that you're asking the board to conclude, that, and I'd asked the engineer if he would entertain me to put up one of the year 10 pictures, not the one in the front, but one, another one, not that one, that one, back. Okay, that one. You've determined that that is a proposed viewing of what the property will look like in year 10, based on your experience and your understanding of what you're proposing. At what point, if you'll go back one picture, do we think we're going to go from that picture to something resembling, not necessarily equal to, 8-1? Next picture, thank you.
I believe this is an accurate representation of 10 years.
Okay. So, the answer's 10 years?
Answer's 10 years.
Okay, that's good, okay, I don't have any other questions on that now.
Yeah, and let me just, let me just clarify one thing about trees that, that I, I think is causing some confusion. And so, the public knows as well, we don't consider shrubs, grasses as trees, they have to be a tree. What's caused some confusion is the landscape architect has distinguished between canopy trees and ornamental trees. Let's remove that distinction. They're either trees that keep their leaves, or trees that don't. So, let's, let's just use that classification from now on to refer to trees, and I think we'll be a lot more clear.
Thank you, Dr. Orsini. Two more questions for you. When there was a discussion about the wetland buffers, and this is for the landscape architect, there was an indication that trees couldn't be planted in the wetlands buffer, you remember giving that testimony? Or somebody did?
I said we tried to avoid it, yes.
I, I believe, the transcript says what it says, I believe you thought you couldn't plant there, is that what you said, or am I mistaken?
No, I believe we intended to try to avoid it.
Okay. Do you have an understanding that N J D P freely allows for the planting of native vegetation inside wetlands buffers?
Yes.
And so, you could do that if you want to, isn't that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, okay. And, and, and my last question is, and there was a question about this before, but it's still a concern for my clients, what are you going to do to stop the deer from, you know, there's a lot of deer around there, what are you going to do to stop them from lunching, you know, turning this into a buffet, what do you do to protect the vegetation?
When the trees are gone, they'll have protection at the trunk, there's not much I can do to discourage them, other than selecting plants that we think they will mostly avoid. There's a reason that we have two different pine trees on the site, we can argue over how soon they're going to lose their lower limbs versus, you know, some other trees that'll get eaten up even faster.
Do you anticipate some kind of maintenance plan to ensure that trees that have been attacked are timely replaced?
If you're talking about deer rubs-
Yes.
Then yes, we can certainly have those trees replaced.
Right. So, I know my clients would ask that if this were to be approved, that that be a requirement, that there be monitoring so that, because there's a lot of deer over there, that's what I'm told, and that's a concern. I don't have any other question, I thank everybody for your courtesy at this time, so thank you.
Mr. Lanford, I have a question, if you'll indulge me, we keep hearing about discussions about landscaping and maintenance of landscaping, who's responsible for the maintenance of
It will be my client who owns the property.
And any subsequent owners as well?
As well. There is early on a maintenance bond that needs to be posted after the expiration of the maintenance bond, there is a site plan, obviously, that would be approved by this board, which will indicate what trees are going to be there, and if the trees die, the owner has an obligation to replace those trees.
Thank you.
So, that leads me to a follow-up question. So, we've heard a lot of testimony about 10 years being the point at which this representation is going to be essentially maximal screening that you'll get. I mean, sure, the trees could grow even bigger or whatnot, but would it be fair, I mean, I don't know how long a maintenance bond lasts, but since we want to get these trees to 10 years to get this visual effect, would it be fair to make sure the bond lasts for 10 years?
I, I don't, I don't think that is required, number one. Number two, is whether there's a bond or no bond, the owner has an obligation, ostensibly it will be my client, but if there was a potential buyer, to make sure that the site plan is adhered to. The bond doesn't stop somebody from not replacing a tree, the bond just provides funding if the owner doesn't put the tree back in place, and then they would have to call the bond. The reality is, and, you know, we have situations in the township where I've gotten notice that one of my former clients hasn't done something, or something happened on the site, to go fix it, and they fix it. And if not, they are not in compliance with the site plan, they can be either given a violation notice and told to fix it, or given a summons, which are the avenues of recourse, and they are probably more important for enforcement than a bond, because if there was a bond, the township would then have to sue under the bond to collect the money to do the work themselves, which the township really doesn't want to do, because that's not their job to go out and replace trees. So, really, it's, it's site plan enforcement.
Okay. No, I mean, that, that is, that is true, you know, the bond, the bond just is there to sort of compel, you know, the owner to do it, rather than, like you say, the township who doesn't want to do it. Otherwise, it, it's then just becomes constant vigilance, like, I mean, I think any of us can go down our street, and I know that on the residential site plans we've approved, we see trees 40 foot on center. So, if I were to really, you know, be a jerk, I could go to my neighbor who has a front lawn that looks like Little House on the Prairie and say, guess what, I can, I can report you to the zoning board because you're supposed to have two street trees there, that is essentially what you're saying, because that bond is long, long gone for that developer. So, I'm just saying that it, it, it's a way to guarantee that whoever occupies this has the means to make sure that these trees come to this level of development.
I, I will discuss that along with the other comments with my client, I, I don't think it's going to achieve your desired effect, but we'll, we'll discuss it.
Okay, thank you, I would appreciate that at least. We're 10, what should we do? Want to continue, and then everybody comes back next time, should I look into some public? All right, so, you're going to have all of these witnesses at the next meeting, and then we're going to do traffic?
They will all be back at the next meeting, I also have traffic testimony at the next meeting.
Because we are at 10 o'clock, and I'm afraid that if we just start picking people who want to come up and talk, we'll then be here till like midnight. So, I, I will first of all want to assure that whatever balance of time we have at the next meeting, again, you know, the public is going to get full, a full ability to speak. These witnesses will be back again, of course, Mr. Lieberman, I know, will be back again, so.
And, and my suggestion is that these, these witnesses be questioned before I get on to traffic.
Right.
And also, and also, hopefully, I will be able to report back to you at the next meeting on some of the comments that were raised by the board members.
Folks, can I suggest everybody stick around for a couple of minutes, I know everybody wants to go home, but you might want to hear what the board has to say when you come back in June, and somebody wants to know why not. The proposal is that the public will be allowed to cross-examine Mr. Lanford's three witnesses who testified at the start of the hearing, and then he will go to traffic engineering in the same manner upon which he conducted his examination tonight. I do have another point, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Please.
Mr. Lieberman, if you might return to your place.
Yes, sir.
At 5:30 this afternoon, because I have no life and read my emails at this hour, you sent Ms. Woodbury a letter, an email, indicating that you have three witnesses that you intend to call at some point, is that correct?
Yes, it is correct, yes.
I'm assuming that all of them are planning on providing expert reports in advance of their testimony?
I don't normally, in objective cases, it's not my practice, if, if that's a request, we could, we could accommodate it, but as an objector, I don't normally do that.
I'm suggesting you, it's up to the board, obviously, and since I'm only special counsel to this board, it's to some of the others you and I deal with, it usually helps for the board to know, and possibly the applicant, that they might want to know what your clients might actually want to testify to before we get here that night.
Yeah, I, it's, I, the rules don't require it, if I'm being told that you want it, I'll do it, and, or if I could do an outline, you know, I'd like to also save some money for the client's suit, but it's, it's, I have to put it in your-
That's fine, I mean, I think if you're going to, like, you, you alluded to Stuart, a noise expert.
Yes.
It would be, it would be good to have some, you know, background on what they're going to present as testimony, so the board has the same privilege, right, as, as we would with the client providing, like, you asked, right, whether we got those plans on May 3rd, and I said, no, we got them ahead of time. Well, I think we have to be fair on both sides, and you can provide us with what your, if you're going to have planning, engineering, and noise and acoustic engineering witnesses come up, that we get some outline of what they might be talking about.
As I said to you, I don't normally do it, it isn't required, if you want it, I'm going to do it. I, it's, it's a reasonable request, and if you, I think you're saying you want it, and we'll do it.
I do it. I think it would be, and I think it's fair to the applicant, too, because, I mean, they're providing us a packet, and, you know, we're going to keep this, by the way, that's why, that's my way of telling the board, please keep this for the next time, and so I, I think it's fair.
We will do it, but I would like, in return, though, I have one question, and that is this-
Oh, I like to quit, I'm not sure I like to pro quo, but go ahead.
It's not, I'm going to do it no matter what, because she asked me to do it, so it's not that, but I just want to make sure, I don't think I have to bring back, bring my experts the next time, it sounds like we've got, everybody's going to be asking questions here, they've got two more witnesses, then everybody's going to ask questions, I'm sure I'm going to ask questions, I would rather not bring them back here if they're not going to be required, I'd rather bring back for the meeting after, it seems like that's fair for scheduling, I don't know what your view is on that.
I don't know, so if we start the next meeting where I say we're going to open to the public-
Right.
-for cross-examination of these three witnesses.
Right.
That is, the public that is not being represented by you or the other counsel.
Right.
I can't predict how long that will take, let's say it's just Arnie, Arnie might be quick.
I have a feeling it's going to not be just Arnie.
Might not be just Arnie.
I don't think so.
But, there's, there's still a lot of folks in the room who are represented by either you or the other counsel, so that does take out a lot of people who individually could come up, I don't know how long that would take, and I would probably put some time limit so we could get through everybody who wants to talk. Then we would have, you know, your traffic expert, and then we would probably have you come back and cross the traffic expert.
Right.
I can't guarantee how any one meeting will proceed, so, I mean, it's at your risk if you don't bring your experts back, and then they are not here, but I, I can't, I can't foresee how many of the public or how long it will take. It won't be limitless, I mean, there'll be a reasonable time limit for each person to speak out of fairness, but I, I can't predict how long that will take.
Mr. Orsini, may I suggest, and perhaps as a compromise, I don't think Mr. Lieberman would get through all three of his witnesses at the next meeting, but perhaps he should have one witness available to go at the next meeting, in case we finish up our case, and there's time left over that evening, so perhaps he should have one available.
That sounds, does that sound reasonable?
I would appreciate, I'd appreciate it if that's okay, that would, I'd be okay with that.
You can select whichever one you think would be, you know, since we're, since we're crossing, what, site engineer, landscape architect, architect, maybe you want to bring, who are, who are you bringing?
Engineer, acoustic engineer, or planner.
Yeah.
Well, I wouldn't do, the planner is always last, you know, I would-
I would, I would also point out, Mr. Lieberman, that whoever you bring, we need to report at least 10 days in advance of the next hearing, because we went to admissible land use law. And by the way, Mr. Lanford, I don't think I have to tell you, but I will, any amendments to anything that you plan on providing to the board also needs to be with the board at least 10 days in advance.
Understood.
Thank you.
Yeah, I understand that, too, yep, thank you. Do you, do you have anything else for me, or can I return to my point at seat?
You can, you can probably, you're probably relieved.
Thank you very much. Oh, I, we just need to know the next date, that's all.
Christine, I may, something?
No. B9 Schoolhouse will be carried to June 21st at 7:30 here at the school building.
June 21st.
June 21st, at 7:30 at 2301 Route 27, the Board of Education School Building. No notice will be required-
Folks, please, just-
No notice will be required since it's being put on the record now.
We need a motion.
We need a motion to carry, well, you're going to give us that, right, obviously, that extent, whatever extension of time, we're already well into it, I'm sure.
If, if you need an extension of time, for the record this evening, I will give you an extension of time through the end of July, I will put it in writing, and obviously, if we need more time beyond that, we'll deal with it.
Fair enough.
So noted.
It's a motion, member- It's a motion, members of the board, to continue this hearing without further notice to Wednesday, June 21, 2023, at 7:30 PM at the Board of Education offices here at 2301 Route 27 in Somerset, New Jersey, without further notice.
I will second.
And Mr. Landford will agree to the extension of time, a decision to June 31, July 31, sorry.
I will second. And can we do it by affirmation?
Absolutely.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, we're done for tonight.